All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 4th Board of Selectmen meeting. We're going to go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll move into Citizens' input.
Sure.
My flag is to the flag of the United States of America.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 4th Board of Selectmen meeting. We're going to go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll move into Citizens Input. Seth, Molly?
Sure.
My flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. I don't think we have anyone here for Citizens Input. Do we have anything that was submitted in writing, Christina? No? Okay. All right. So I am going to kind of skip around to a Selectmen's update, just that I think it's important for us to hit, hit right up front. Just some news regarding the Board. So you may see that there's four of us up here right now. We actually received word earlier today that Ed O'Leary has submitted his resignation effective immediately to step down from the Board of Selectmen. His family commitments have become too great for him to fulfill the requirements of the position on the Board. And, you know, it's obviously been a pleasure serving with him, decades of service to the town as an employee, and then even after on this Board. So I just wanted to let everyone know, to thank Ed, and we certainly understand, you know, this is a volunteer position, and sometimes we've got to do what's right for us personally. So with that, the immediate question came up, what do we do? And I think we're going to just resume with the four of us until election time. So our election is May 2nd. The date that people can pull papers for the election, not just for the Board of Selectmen, but moderator, clerk, assessor, school committee, water and sewer commissioner, Board of Health, library, and planning, all have seats that are all three-year terms. Papers can be pulled starting January 18th for any of those positions there. They require 50 signatures, and they have to be back anytime before March 14th for that election on May 2nd. So that's just some, some breaking news that I wanted to hit right up front, and just remind people about some election dates as well. All right. So with that, I'm just going to flip a couple items on the agenda quick. We're going to go to the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee, Annual Report and Appointments first, and then I think we'll move over to the COVID Update directly after that. All right. So if you want to come up, let everyone, I think everyone in the community knows who you are, but let them know who you are, and give us your, your annual report.
Phil Dudley from the Foxborough Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. I think our agreement was that I'd be briefed tonight, so I just want to give you some highlights. And then there's a personnel change to make. Three quick highlights. We continue to work with Senator Feeney and Representative Barrows on a law creating more mandated reporters in Massachusetts. And so Linda's going to join me up here, I think.
Sorry, Linda, I switched the COVID Update to try to get you guys out of here. That's probably the longest item of the night, so.
Welcome. So some of us testified before the legislature remotely, including Superintendent Burdos, who was sitting behind me tonight, who did a great job. And the next day, I don't know if other people saw it, there was a report on WCVB that the legislature is working on that issue. So I was glad that it got some attention. Secondly, we continue to do trainings to keep up to date with various segments of the community on preventing child sexual abuse. Town Hall did trainings, the schools, public safety, and other sectors. Thirdly, the program we work with is called Darkness to Light, and the president of that, Kate Brewer, came up and met with us to discuss improving the format and the, the video and so on that they use for training. And we were part of some, like only two, actually, communities that took part in giving them input by reviewing what they have developed. So a new training is coming out. So we worked on that also. A side note, some of us are going to be on Netflix.
Oh, wow.
In February in a documentary on child sexual abuse that was made. There are actually two this year that we took part in. But one of them is going to be on Netflix in, in February. So our goals are the same for 2022 as they always are, making people aware that child sexual abuse is a very serious issue that's ongoing in this and every other community and needs to be addressed. And we have a couple personnel changes that Linda's going to mention.
Right. So we are going to replace Deb Giadano with Doug Seuss. We thank Deb for all her work, and I know you guys do too. But I think Deb, Doug will be a great replacement for Deb. And Jim Kanata is going to step into Rob Lucas's role. It just seems like Jim has more time to make it to our meetings, but if need be, Rob Lucas will, will sub in where needed, so.
Okay. All right. And there is a full report that is also going to be available on your website, and it also is part of the annual town report.
Correct.
So if anyone is interested in the, you know, that was the highlights tonight, but the full report.
Right.
It's available in a couple, couple of places immediately, and then, you know, coming soon as well. And just one question. I know town employees are going through Darkness to Light, but I think that Board and Committee members are supposed to. I know I did when I joined, but Bill has that. Is that on the radar, that you guys are also making sure that Committees, Commissions, and Boards are, are taking part of that as well?
Let me just say, yeah. So I do believe so. I'll have to verify that with Mike to make sure, but I do believe that's part of the overall training as well.
Okay. I know, I know I got it when I joined, but I don't know, I don't think I've seen anything in a while. So it just makes me think, as you guys come in here, you know, not to forget, that that's also a big group of volunteers in town that, you know, connect a lot of organizations as well.
Yep.
So if we can just double check on that as well, Bill, because I don't.
Certainly will. Yeah.
I don't think that I've, I've seen it this year.
I haven't, I haven't.
Yeah. So I think, I think based on, if me and Stephanie haven't seen it, we probably have some work to do there on, on Boards and Committees as well.
We'll remind you.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
Perfect.
A quick question. Do we, just a protocol, do we have to vote on those two?
Yep, yep, we do. Yep. And I know we have the whole report here, so I didn't know if anyone had any questions or.
Read it.
Any other comments or anything, which, before we move on to the appointments. Okay. All right. So with that, we have a motion to make those two appointments that you mentioned.
Correct.
So thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Motion to appoint Doug Seuss and Jim Kanata to the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee for a term to end May 31st, 2022, and May 31st, 2023, respectively.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. Thank you so much for all the work, all three of you do. We have three of them here tonight, and with us and ongoing. All right. So I think now we'll flip over to the, to the COVID. Were you here for Citizens Input, sorry? Are you?
No.
Okay. All right. So next we have the COVID Update, if you want to come on up. And I think I saw Tom on, right? He's on Zoom? All right. So, you know, given the state of the world, really, right now, when we were working on the agenda last Thursday, we had mentioned, you know, we haven't done one of these updates in a little bit. And obviously, with the new variant, over the last two weeks, the world is just in a different place. So, you know, I wanted you guys to come in and talk about testing and boosters, and, you know, if there's anything we need to think about as a Board for things happening in town. I know we have Dr. Burdos and Bill Yucinahir from the school side, because they don't have a meeting this week. So I had, you know, asked if they wanted to come in in case they had any updates that were more timely. I know that they have some, some clinics coming out as well. I think I saw one for Monday, one for Friday. So if you guys can give us, you know, an update, and then I, I know I have some questions, so other people may, may as well.
Sure. So, I mean, I kind of, you know, put together our numbers and a couple other things, so I can give you a brief update of what's, you know, kind of going on.
He should introduce himself.
Yeah, sorry. Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health here for the town of Foxborough.
And Tom?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Tom Cameron, Public Health Nurse with the Fire Department.
Thank you.
So right now, in the last 14 days, the town's seen 171 cases. 14-day average daily incident rate is 67.1 cases, and our percent positivity rate is 9.23. So these are some of the highest numbers I've seen here since my time here. I looked through some of our previous numbers, and in 2021, around February, our incident rate, so our case count for two weeks was about 134, and our incident rate was 52.6. So our numbers are right now at the highest point that we've seen here in the pandemic. Case, you know, Norfolk County is an area of high transmission, and, you know, the state, as well as the CDC, recommends that people do wear masks. And the CDC estimates at about 83% of the cases out there right now because of the Omicron variant. Also, the state believes that that may be higher, but, you know, they're still kind of gauging on whether, you know, how much they believe because of this recent surge, that, you know, it may be all Omicron right now, rather than the 83%. But, you know, time, I guess, will tell as they, they test the variants.
Can I ask you a quick, just stop you to ask a quick numbers question? Because, you know, back in February, home tests weren't a thing.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a bunch of people now that have, you know, obviously, it's like The Hunger Games, but you can go out and find home tests, and.
Yep.
You can test on a home test, and that number never makes it to you, or makes it into that positivity rate that we're seeing, you know, is upwards of 20% for the state. I know that people don't need to call you if they, you know, are on a rapid test to report it. But my question on the school side is if someone calls the school nurse and lets them know that their kid's out for COVID, does that make it then to us for the numbers, or is it just, it does not? Okay. Because that's a question I got, and I wasn't, I wasn't sure if, if those sides were talking to take those into account.
I have had people call and say, hey, I've tested positive, which is the right thing to do. We want to educate people. We want to say, okay, now that you've tested positive here, it's the quarantine, here's the isolation procedures, this is what you need to do. I mean, that's the most important aspect of it. You know, it's, it's better than, it's more important than being put into, you know, a system, likely, but if, if someone wanted to be put into the system, I mean, we have, we could do that for them. You know, at-home test kits, they may not be as accurate as a PCR test, but they do play an important role. If you want to get tested, and a lot of people can't find PCR tests, they can't go to Walgreens, they can't go to CVS and actually get the test or at a doctor's office or at a hospital. These at-home tests do play an important role, and they do tell you if you're positive or not for, for COVID. So it's important that people have them. And, you know, any sort of testing, we believe is good testing. So, you know, that being said, you know, we're trying to find them, and we're trying to procure them. I actually sent off for about 500 tests today, and I'm hoping that the state can fulfill that, and that we get them for residents that can't find them.
Okay. Okay. So our numbers, in, in reality, are probably hundreds of cases higher.
Absolutely.
Than what we think.
Not to mention the people that don't report, the people that don't test.
Right.
There's, the, the numbers are likely far higher.
Okay.
Well, you know what I would say, like, if, if, if I tested positive knowing now, I mean, for us, I, our family was tested in, in the hospital, so it went, I mean, I got a call from Tom. I didn't even, you know, like, it got back to Tom. I mean, that was early on, too. We didn't know, you know, so now a lot of people know what the guidelines are. But Tom was able to really say, okay, this is what you need to do. You need to, you know, you need to quarantine for this many days. You need to this. This is when you can. So I would urge people, I mean, no one, no one is, is doing it because they want to know your business, but you guys are a wealth of information. You think we're two years into this, but it's, things are changing every day. So I would urge people that even if it's just to make sure you know what you should be doing, what your days are, when you're contagious, whatever, to, you know, to, to reach out to the Board of Health, or possibly Tom at the Fire Department. And it's not really about, and the numbers are good for us to know, too, because I guess it, you know, it does track where, you know, where we are. So nobody, not about knowing anybody's business. When I got Tom's call, I was like, oh, my God, how does he know?
Do we even, do we even still do that with the numbers where they are right now? Like, are we proactively making outbound calls, Tom? I think we're.
We're trying to, but what we're doing is we're prioritizing it right now. So we're working with the Early Education Centers, working with our school nurses. I know Matt gave some numbers. I curated some numbers earlier today. And since December 20th, it looks like we've had 452 new cases that we know about between PCR and antigen tests. And since January 1st, we've had 100 cases. So this, we really are in front of a, a, an incredible surge right now that we haven't seen to date yet. So it, it's becoming impractical to try to contact each and every person, especially when, you know, really what we're trying to do is find these pockets of, of positive cases and isolate them so that they don't spread. Lots of encouraging news that we're learning about with Omicron. So hopefully, you know, we'll start to see the peak in a couple of weeks, if, if anything coming out of South Africa translates to, to our numbers. But right now, we're, we're just really prioritizing, you know, I've tried different formats, trying to reach out and send by text messaging, phone calls, leaving voicemails. You know, we're, we're doing the best we can. But I think right now, we're just trying to target and focus our attentions on where we can make the, the greatest difference in terms of, you know, larger clusters and things like that.
Tom, would you say, I thought I heard on the news, would you say that the numbers now are the highest that they've been throughout the whole pandemic?
You know, in, in my opinion, I would say yes. And I think that's multifactorial, though. I mean, we, we have a great awareness of some of the symptoms. We, we, like, like we said, we're now two years into this. So we have mass testing, more people testing. I, I think that it's multifactorial. But then again, I, I think that the numbers are actually much, much higher than what we have on paper. You know, basically, the typical iceberg with the case counts. You know, think about the people that, you know, may think they have allergies, or, you know, a small head cold, that don't consider themselves, you know, sick enough to have COVID. And that's, that's really what Omicron is presenting as right now. What they're seeing is because of, you know, immunity in the community, where you have vaccinations or previous exposures, where people have antibodies, that the Omicron isn't, isn't as, the symptoms appear milder, and they appear to be in the upper respiratory tract, where they don't really get down into the lungs. So it's mostly in the throat. So the symptoms are resembling headaches, you know, sinus pressure, and a sore throat. You might have a light cough. And, and, and a lot of times, those symptoms can be very ambiguous. So folks may not feel inclined to test. And that's why we, we try to stress that, you know, have a high index of suspicion and, and a situational awareness. And if you've been in places where you might have been exposed, to kind of, you know, take that next step when you can get testing, to, to actually conduct the testing.
Thank you.
Question for you, Tom. So a while back, I thought I had some symptoms, and I talked to somebody in the health industry, and they said, do you have, did you have a fever, or do you have a fever? And I said, no. And he said, okay, well, that's not COVID. So that was just, that's just a story, just to, you know, get to the question of like, is, is fever something that's still as synonymous with COVID and COVID symptoms, or is that less so potentially with Omicron?
I mean, it definitely can be. However, you know, all through the pandemic, I think maybe 30 to 40% of patients actually had fevers. And, you know, that, that fever threshold has changed over the pandemic, where, you know, in a hospital setting, an actual fever was 100.4. And we've actually backed that down to 100, because we're trying to lower that benchmark so that folks are more, more inclined to, to be cautious and be tested. I'll tell you, we've seen people that have had very vague, ambiguous symptoms. Some people have been asymptomatic. I've had people complain of just simply eye, eye burning, throat burning, very, very vague symptoms. However, when you start to put one-on-one together, you start to realize, okay, I've been with this person, or I've been in this setting. So, you know, it becomes more likely that it's probably COVID, especially if there are, you know, folks you work with, colleagues, or, or household members that are ill. You know, to keep in mind, though, we're also seeing flu, and, and flu presents with, you know, a lot of the same symptoms. So, you know, it, it's really, it's really becoming more difficult. But the fever in the beginning, a lot of the cases that we had didn't have fevers.
And, and I'm seeing, like personally, you know, in people I know, that, you know, zero symptoms, but maybe they were exposed to someone, you test on day five, positive.
Yeah.
Zero symptoms, you're getting together with a group, and you're testing to be safe, positive.
Yeah. It also might be something, the, the vaccine seems to cause a lot of people to get like chills in the middle of the night and that kind of thing, you know? So it's still worth it, though.
So for vaccination update, you know, 75% of the total population here in Foxborough is vaccinated. 32% of the population has now been boosted. They've had their booster dose. So that's good. People are starting to get booster doses. We actually believe that tomorrow, the CDC is going to meet, and 12- to 15-year-old population will be able to get their booster probably pretty soon. So, you know, you may see some changes to that as well. That's kind of, that's, you know, what I had in, in a nutshell. I know Tom had, he can talk, he does have a booster clinic scheduled for us here.
Can you also mention the, the burning question, like if someone has COVID? Can you also mention the, the burn-in question, like if someone has Covid? When can they get boosted? I think, you know, there's still are misconceptions out there about, you know, you need to wait three months or, you know, is it? I've heard fourteen days. I've heard all different things.
So when we first began, um, you had to be symptom-free to receive the booster shot, uh, but what we've learned since then is that if you. Receive a booster or a second vaccination too close to recovering from Covid, that you can have some profound symptoms. So I think that the best guidance right now is, you know, for an adult population, it's probably two weeks since, uh, following your isolation recovery. And what we've been seeing in the pediatric population is they've been advising a month, um, between receiving vaccinations.
So we've got a couple of clinics coming up. We've got one on town, one at Town Hall on Friday. I saw that one went out. And then Amy, I saw your email that there's one on Monday at the IGO. But that's only for kids that are sixteen plus, is that correct?
Yes, and if that changes to where it's twelve plus, we'll send that out, but they don't have the ability with their software to be able to take.
Okay, so, so that is just sixteen plus, so, you know, the good news is, is we have two booster clinics coming up. You know, within the next week for anyone that's sixteen and older, that's a resident. Um, and then I think, I think the, the other thing, you know, do we need to think about? And I don't want to create any extra work for anyone, because I know everyone's got a lot of work, but like, should the nurses? Be reporting the numbers in to get a full picture, you know, to the Board of Health and, and you, Tom, just to get a full picture or, you know? Should we just keep them separate and unknown? Um, and then. Just to, you know, to educate the population, so as much as we see things out there that, like, I know I still hear in my day-to-day life, like. People think it's five days, well, there's day zero to think about, like, what kind of communications can we put out as a town? Like, the pediatrician in town, in my opinion, put out a great one today. It was like the most. Easy to read, everything you could think of, like, is there anything like that that we need to kind of roll out or think about just to educate people? Because even if you think you're in, in touch and in tune with it, so much is changing right now.
So you, Christina, um, and I have had that conver- conversation already, um, and, you know. Unfortunately, uh, the Health Department, we haven't seen a lot of traffic, public traffic on our Facebook page and, and things like that. I do have. Um, a dashboard that I put out there so I can keep our numbers up to date. I update them every Friday and it has our most current numbers. Um, you know, so I think moving forward, um, you know, I would, uh, we've asked Christina to maybe. As things change, maybe the town puts it out rather than just the Health Department, um, to give it some more, um, of knowledge by people. Hopefully, uh, just that simple change may get it seen by more people.
Yeah, I think, I think if it's on the town page, it will get a little bit more. More visibility than, than if you like the Board of Health's specific page.
Right, right now, if you do test, is the guideline right now, um, five days of quarantine? And then five more days with a mask? Is, is, is that what the guideline is right now? And I know that that could change.
But then there's also day zero too, which is a big, trips people up as well.
So, and, and I know, um, this, it actually, it was revised as of three. As of three PM, I think, four PM, I think they revised it, um, but, yes, you're correct and. But it depends, and, uh, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, it depends if you're vaccinated, um, and now. Um, if you're boosted, that's actually being vaccinated and if you're not boosted. Um, you're really, that's being unvaccinated and not boosted, so. It changes, um, and it's changing on a daily basis, um, and if you'd like. Um, I can, I can read it to you right now, so who?
The CDC actually has a Facebook page too, that I had never followed the CDC on social media until recently, but they put out some good like charts and. You know, easily shareable things that are already created.
Yeah, um, but so, and, and the state plans on adopting, so as of, you know, today, the CDC came out with their new guidelines. And the state plans on adopting their new guidelines, um, you know. As of this morning, you know, you isolate after testing positive, uh, for five days. Uh, if you had no symptoms, you could continue to wear a mask in public after those five isolation days. Um, and then if you were quarantined, uh, so basically a quarantine is if you were exposed. Um, you know, you would want to wear a mask, um, in public for at least ten days and then. You would want to test on day five if, if, if you could. Um, but yeah, these are all things that, you're right. It's important because it changes so rapidly, um, as time goes by. So yeah, we'll try to get that out as much as we possibly can, um, and we recommend that people reach out to. You know, us here at the Health Department or Tom at the Fire Department and, you know, ask these questions because. You know, because it changes so much, we'd be glad to work with residents to, um, you know, help them through these tough times.
So is there anything we need to think about as, you know, the Board of Selectmen? You know, obviously the mask mandate has come back to all municipal buildings. Things haven't changed, you know, on the school side. Any of like the larger venues or larger gathering things that we need to think about as a community? That, that we need to, I, I think we're good right now as, as good and as under control as you can be in the middle of a surge of, in the pandemic, but.
No, it's, it's, it's a great point, and I think that really comes down to those small little, uh, approaches to mitigation. Really, only two things that have shown to be effective during the entire pandemic is the wearing of masks and vaccinations. I mean, vaccines are the best way to prevent infection. Even if you get sick, um, you are less likely to carry a higher viral load and therefore less likely to transmit it. Um, and, and the masks, I mean, obviously the better filtration, uh, multiple layer cough masks are okay, K ninety-fives, um. You know, really what you're thinking, thinking about is trying to prevent that source exposure, uh, and if you're in an enclosed environment, you want that filtration. So you're trying to stop that, that droplet spread, the respiratory hospitalization. Um, you know, and, and I think it's important to also keep in mind that, um, as Matt alluded to earlier, that the antigen test, the at-home kits. Uh, are, are very good, um, but what we're seeing now with, with Omicron, um, is that, you know, you may have to. You may have several negative tests before you have a positive test, um, as the viral load increases and there's a predictable arc. And that's why we have the guidance that we have now in terms of isolation and quarantining. Um, because we know over a certain period of days, you're going to be really infectious and contagious and then. The viral load's going to peak and then it's going to drop off and you get better, um, but with that, some of these tests, um, if you, because the Omicron kind of sits. It's perceived, it's thought to sit more in the throat, that when you do a nasal swab, you may not get that virus right away until the viral load's high, so. I would just advise, and, and I think, um, we, we spoke with Christina earlier this morning, um, in, in terms of getting messaging out. That's easy to understand and, and accessible, um, that if you have symptoms and you're testing an antigen kit. To, to, to continue to be suspicious and, and if possible, seek a PCR test. Um, what they're saying now is if you have a positive antigen test, you know, that's it, it's positive. If you've got symptoms and it tests positive, you don't have, keep trying to test, looking for a different answer. That it is what it is. Um, however, if you have a negative test of symptoms, it, it, it warrants, um, some further investigation just to be sure, so. I think those are, those are the measures, just to, just be situation aware, uh, wear a mask when you can, um. You know, create some space when you can, and then if you have some symptoms, to, to either report them or test as soon as you think it's possible.
All right, great. Anything, Bill or Amy, that you guys, you're, I, I think all the parents are getting your communications, they're great. Um, a lot of questions before we all returned from school vacation, so, um, I know that. Everyone is working around the clock and is doing the absolute best they can, so I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all of you guys, um, because it, it's, it's a lot. I can't even imagine being in your position, so anyway, we can help you, support you. Help get communication out, you know, whatever we can do, let us know.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the board? Yeah.
Sorry, I just, I just had something I was thinking about, um, and it's, I think, probably a question for Matt. What I've been thinking about as we move through the different variants is, um, breakthrough cases and hospitalizations. So I know data is hard to come by, it's hard to track, we may not have it, but I just, if you have any empirical or even anecdotal. Thought, evidence or thoughts around.
Yes, so.
That's been changing over time?
Absolutely, so I can tell you, um, just by looking at the data, um, at the height of the pandemic, um, like I talked about before. So this would be, um, you know, say last February-ish. Um, as, at that time, about four thou- so three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five people were hospitalized for Covid. Um, right now, you're looking at a couple thousand, uh, so, you know, even though.
But not in town.
No, no, this is state data, this is state data. So statewide, the numbers for hospitalization are less, even though they're rising, because. Again, if your tests are going up and more people are testing for Covid and more, it's out there more. Of course, your hospitalizations are going to go higher as well, um, but, uh, you know, the, it is, it is less than what it was.
Overall, a lower rate of hospitalizations, um.
Throughout the state.
We're still only at two deaths, as far as I understand, is that correct?
Uh, Tom, as far as I know, I don't know if Tom.
That number hasn't changed in a long time.
No, in Foxborough, we have two that we know of. There was one other one that we thought might have been attributed to, but I, it had nothing to do with a Covid diagnosis. Um, and, and, and that's right, you know, we're looking at data, some of the stuff that's coming out of South Africa and it blended with national data in the US, you know. You know, when you boil it down, it's like point two to point four percent of hospitalizations and deaths, and when you compare that empirically to the rise in case counts. It almost brings it on power of seasonal flu right now, so that's, that suggests that we may be looking at. Uh, something that's going to be endemic rather than a, a novel pandemic, uh, virus situation, so fingers crossed that, you know, we, we, we see the. That even though the numbers are high, that we, we see low hospitalization usage, uh, that would be very, very encouraging.
That would be, um, and then as of, so for breakthrough, so I looked at the, uh, the two-week case count, the hundred and seventy-one cases. Um, that the, the state reported, out of those, thirty percent, thirty-six percent, um, were fully vaccinated. Um, but again, it's tough to tell, I mean, with the Omicron variant, if you're vaccinated, you're still going to get it. Uh, if you're boosted, you're still going to get it, um, you, but, you know, we hope that it's less severe. And that's what we're finding, that, you know, mostly, you know, it's less severe in the people that are vaccinated, so we hope people are vaccinated. We hope, you know, we want to encourage people to wear their masks, just like Tom said, um, and that's really going to make the biggest difference. Uh, throughout the, you know, the course of this, uh, pandemic.
So it's, it's hard to understand, um, breakthrough trends from one strain to the next.
Absolutely.
Some rate, right, uh, thirty-something percent?
And that's, and, and that's just a, you know, all these numbers that we talk about are snapshot in time, and to be honest, they're, they lag a little bit. So, you know, the numbers that we talk about today were from two weeks ago, um, and because it's always, you know, a two-week. Case reporting from, you know.
Yeah, I was just thinking about comparing to, say, February of twenty twenty.
Right.
Um, breakthroughs, it's hard to, it's hard to compare, but.
It, it, it absolutely is.
Okay, okay.
So in other hospital, of a Seth's question, are, are we seeing like they told us, the hospitalizations are. Are being more people who are not vaccinated? Is, is, you know, I mean, that's what they kind of told us, you know, when they would say.
Tom's shaking his head on the screen.
Okay, yeah, because, because now on the news you're hearing, they keep talking about how the hospitals are, are crazy again, you know? And, and staff and, and, and that they're, they're busted from the seams again, but, so. But I guess why I'm asking is that, I mean, I know it's a personal choice and all, but, um, that's what they told us would happen if we vaccinated, that. You, you may still get it, but we weren't going to see the hospitalizations or the deaths if you had, if you vaccinated. So is that what we're seeing, Tom?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Seth, um, you know, I, I think the hospitalization aspect of it is multifactorial, like you said, there's staffing issues, there's supply issues. Um, you know, there's a lot of changes in working conditions based on accounting for Covid patients, um, but you're absolutely right, um. You know, the hardest, the hardest hit to the hospitals are, um, severe illness, uh, for patients who are unvaccinated.
Thanks, Tom.
One, one last thing, and then I'm done, um, so we don't have a crystal ball, and I know you guys are not, um. Don't have a crystal ball, right, so, but, um, if you think about this, the different variants, we had the original. Then we had something called Delta that was, seemed to be more dangerous and, and harmful. Omicron is very serious and it spreads like crazy, um, hospitalizations are down a little bit. Um, so maybe the symptoms are a little bit less for Omicron. If you're, if you're looking for, let's say you did have a crystal ball, um, what is that? What does that trend feel like to you, or could you comment on where you think this is headed?
And I'll, I'll say, you know, Tom can, after me, please, Tom, go, but, you know, we're, we're hoping right now our crystal ball is that, you know. Right now, that, um, the Omicron is less severe and, you know, it takes its course. Hopefully, it's not outcompeted by another variant that is more severe, um, so, you know, I think. Time can only tell and we can only, you know, recommend that people get vaccinated, wear their mask, um, and do those things. And fingers are crossed that, you know, things don't change, um, and I guess that's how I can leave it. Tom, do you have anything else?
That was.
Go ahead, Tom, sorry.
I'm sorry, no, that was very well said and, and it really is, um, you know, we're worried about, you know, the potential for a mutation that could be a little more problematic. Um, you know, but however, the virus is going to follow the path of least resistance. Um, and if we've, if we can learn anything from what we've seen in South Africa, who is on the dramatic downside right now after about a month or so. Um, they're seeing cases that are just really falling off and, and the, the severe illness, um, is, is dramatically reduced. If that holds true for us, then hopefully we'll see a peak in a few weeks, um, and then, you know, pending that we don't have any other further. Uh, mutations or other, other concurrent, uh, issues, um, hopefully we'll be in a better position, but, you know, it all, like Matt said, really. It's, it's a snapshot in time and, and time will indeed tell.
So I guess that, the, the point of, I guess the point I was thinking, or what I was thinking about is. A lot of the vigilance that we're talking about here is, I think, still as critical as ever. Um, Omicron, the symptoms may be slightly less, but we don't know what's around the corner. Um, any mutation could be less serious or more, so all of these precautions that we're talking about are. Would seem to be as critical as ever at this, at this point.
I would say they're even more critical because although this is a weak one, it seems like it spreads a lot easier. So, you know, by the time, you know, you contact with me, I may not know what, you know, it's just, it, it's, it's spreading a lot easier, so I think it's a time to be even more vigilant. You know, than ever and not let our guard down, just because this one is, you know, a, a more mild version, it's clearly spreading a lot faster. And more rapidly, you know, than we've seen in the past, so.
Absolutely, if, if, you know, if anyone that is watching this, if you have symptoms, you know, i- it's important to get tested. It's important to seek out, you know, either the PCR testing or even antigen testing, if that's all you can find and. Um, you know, follow any necessary isolation quarantine procedures, um, in order to keep everyone around you safe.
And I think we'll, we'll try to communicate, you know, from the page and from the schools as everyone's doing. It's clinics that become available and then if those tests become available, although I don't think five hundred will, will go very far right now, so.
No, that, they won't.
People are buying multiples so they can test a few ti- few times, so.
Yeah, people, but people can't find them, so, you know, if, if they can't find them and we can offer them to them, it's very important that we do that.
So they can, can reach out to you, no, no guarantee you'll have them, but they, they could re- reach out to the Department of Health if they can't find them anywhere else.
Absolutely, and, uh, when, when we get them, we'll, you know, we'll definitely let people know.
Yeah, but there are none right now, so I don't want to give people false.
Yeah, no.
Tomorrow morning, the phone will be going.
I know Walgreens in Plainville, I was in there and they had got seven thousand, they were literally flying out the door with the door.
CVS had, uh, right next door had about three cases of them and they were probably gone within an hour.
Wow, yeah, so.
The word gets out on Facebook, someone says, they're at CVS, and no, they're not, they're not. Sorry, one last question I have, it's kind of a question I kind of don't want the answer to, but I guess, uh, I'm just going to ask it anyhow. Um, so, could the vari- this issue with the variants, could this just continue? You know? I mean, I'm hoping that's not what's going to happen, but I just, you know, I mean, worst case scenario, variant four comes after, after this one, or?
Well, I think we've, I think we've distancing from a noble, a novel coronavirus to, uh, more of an endemic. Or a yearly type of, of an exposure, um, they're doing a lot of testing right now on wastewater and they're looking for viral load. Because we treated fecally, um, and they're seeing incredibly elevated amounts and, and they're seeing this in Massachusetts as well. Um, of high, high amounts of genetic material from coronavirus, so there is a reason to believe that, you know, we may see this, um, you know. Uh, annually, um, much like a flu, where we have, um, a formulation, a seasonal vaccine that we get as we get the flu shot now, um. That, that's the hope, um, that we can get to something where we, we learn to live with it, um, and it. That that's the hope, um, that we can get to something where we we learn to live with it, um, and it becomes something that's more of, um, you know, uh. Less of a, less of a headline than it is now, uh, but, you know, it's it's a, it's a reasonable expectation to 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 think that. We're gonna, we're gonna see this for quite a while.
All right, I can't even imagine how many hours you guys are working, so thank you, and just a reminder for everyone to be kind to everyone, be kind to Matt if you call and. You know, you may not get an answer back right away, or, you know, be kind to Kevin, or everyone in the schools, or the people working in Cumberland Farms and CVS, just everyone. Is so stressed and at their max right now, so thank you, thank you a million times.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um, so up next, we have the assistant town manager's update, but Mike. Is unable to be with us this evening. Um, so I'll turn it over, I'll turn it over to you, Bill. To run through anything you wanna cover on mics, and then your updates as well.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, and um, so I just wanna pass along our condolences to Mike and his family, their definite family. Uh, just within the past twenty-four hours, so, uh, that's part of the reason why he's not here tonight. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, and and if anybody's reason why, wondering why I'm at home, I actually was exposed to. To coronavirus, and I I got it the second, for a second time. So it's entirely possible you can't get it for a second time. Uh, and both times it got from a family member, so, and both times previous to to the exposure, I they they had tested negative. So you just never know. But ultimately, they tested positive later, and then I ultimately got it again. So I was sitting there. Listening to everything that was said tonight and said, you know, this is, it's actually coming full circle because. Um, it can happen to anyone at any time and under any condition, so, um, fortunately, they they, and I just wanted to say that the. I am fully vaccinated, had uh, the booster shot, and uh, fortunately, my my conditions were very, very mild. Um, and probably milder than than many head calls I've had in the past. So, um, just be able to uh, to to give you firsthand consideration, firsthand knowledge of how it how it impacts you. Um, at this point in time. So as far as Mike's report, Mike did put in writing to report, uh, uh, a report to the board tonight. Um, uh, indicating that we are working on the on the uh, conditional vaccination policy that is. Being now being considered, probably by January seventh will be before the the US Supreme Court for consideration, determine. If in fact, we can, how we can actually uh, force employees to to actually be vaccinated or potentially. Lose their job, or or alternatively, look at ways in which they can be, uh, still come to work, but be tested on a regular basis. Um, uh, Mike is also in communication with the school department, um, there's a very issue, and uh, we. We've been, we've been circulating information to the unions about this particular uh, aspect. And uh, we've been in close contact with our labor, labor attorneys to make sure that, you know, everything we're doing is consistent with what. Is coming out of Washington DC and and on a national level. Uh, just to wanna be clear that that this, uh, that the, that the requirements for doing this is a national or federal issue, it's not. Something that is even being this, being enforced by the state or the local community, but is in fact being directed to us from from the federal government. And so what is going to be uh, talked about at the US Supreme Court level is. Is the the ability, this was, this came down through through the, uh, through the OSHA regulations and that. The last time that had been tested was, I think, black in the seventies, if I'm not mistaken, or nineties, rather, if I'm not mistaken. And uh, the US Supreme Court ruled in a decision there that said it was not applicable, or a way that could be used in that manner. So it's entirely possible that that same kind of rule may come out of this decision, but it, so of course, it tends to be, it's all to uh, to be debated by. By the current uh, bench that is in place at this point in time. So, uh, if we, uh, there are current improvements, uh, uh, that are in current status of recruitment, Scott Shippey. Our new building commissioner will be starting work on on uh, January twenty-fourth. Uh, public health inspector, new health, public health inspector Cameron Shammy started yesterday, so he's actually on board. Uh, Tree and Park supervisor Jim Caffey, Catherine started yesterday. Um, and the fire department administrator is in process, uh, hope to be interviewing that person by tomorrow. Uh, the water department coordinator has is accepting applications at this time. Uh, the library director process is in process, and we had just a brief conversation with them just the other day about that process. Uh, community caseworker, uh, they're accepting applications at this time. Full-time uh, dr- uh, van driver, where they're accepting applications for that position. Uh, same thing for police officer and uh, and food inspector, they're accepting applications for a regional grant-funded. Uh, position through Foxborough, Mansfield, Northern, Eastern, Plainville, and Sharon. And finally, that like the housing inspector position is accepting, uh, we're accepting uh, applications for the regional grant-funded housing inspector position. Um, and that that is currently open at this time, and so we looking to fill both those positions soon. Uh, union contract negotiations are all ongoing, and 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 I still, uh, it's still in progress at this time. Um, and the and the temporary standard, the conditional vaccination policy that discussed early is again through OSHA. And that is, that is the matter that is gonna be before the US Supreme Court, uh, this this upcoming week. So that is uh, the summary of of Mike's issues, and uh, and that's the the, uh, that's where we're at at this point in time, so. Um, I'm certainly, if there's anything else that changes, we'll certainly keep the board apprised of that situation.
And Bill, we're getting looped in on some union stuff with the OSHA, you know, emergency temporary standard.
Right.
I think, well, you know, we acknowledge receipt, but, you know, I think that you'll continue to work with the unions and and council as appropriate. On timing, next steps, and all that.
Right, normally, that that's something that should be handled at our level, it's it's unfortunate that was circulated to the board, uh, because that's not something that usually has happened. Uh, but it's usually, should be directed back to the town manager's office, or the HR director in in Mike's case. And uh, we'll, we'll continue to work on those things. It would come to the board, ultimately, in in turn, if there was a change that was needed. Uh, contractually, we certainly would would advise and 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 bring it to for the board for that consideration. But at this point in time, this is strictly a, a process in which we're trying to review it, and make sure, and 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 make sure that we have. Everybody's uh, understanding and agreement on it before we bring it forward any further.
So, so Bill, I I'm not sure if I understood when you were explaining it. Is is, as of right now, are you guys waiting for the Supreme Court's decision on Friday?
Yes, so what what's happening uh, now, Stephanie, is that we have been advised by Labor Council to circulate the policy, even in draft format. Because if in fact, the decision comes down to to engage with the process immediately, uh, we've, we're that far ahead in the process. So, in in some communities are waiting right to the last minute to even to have that conversation, but our our advice was to. Uh, bring the process along and start the conversation earlier rather than later. If it if it means that we don't have to do anything with it. Uh, or if we have come to a different approach, then we certainly will will engage in that as well. But at this point in time, the 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 direction from the federal government has been pretty clear as to what the options are. The question is only whether or not that's legal and we can actually enforce that.
Yeah, so so if it does, so if the Supreme Court uh, agrees with it, you guys just wanna have your decks in a row, so. Uh, I mean, my my gut is they'll they'll act on the decision quickly, because I'm sure lots of communities in other states and everybody is. In the same boat deciding, you know, you know, what what you need to do, so. So the discussion is just like, hey, like, this is, this is gonna come down soon, and you better be prepared. You know, because the town really will have no other uh, option other than to follow what what is mandated down. To to us by the federal government, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And right now, they just, I think Mike explained to us at the last meeting, right now, it's just, um, if they're not vaccinated, they're just. Testing weekly, testing weekly, that's what they're doing now.
Right, I think, and I think that protocol will change slightly, um, if in fact, or or the option, it could be that, uh. That the they're required to get vaccinated, and if they don't, then then it could mean that they could lose their position.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's a lot, that's a pretty serious implication.
Today, they're not being tested weekly, if. No, that.
Yeah, right.
You're you're, there's today, and then there's after the order.
Okay, I thought, I thought the last meeting, Mike, Mike said that that's what had been going on, if they weren't vaccinated, they were being tested.
That was not my understanding, but.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah, they're not, they're not actually being tested as we speak now, no, but that is the opt, that's one of the options available, if. If in fact, the the mandate goes through, then um, that's one of the options that is available.
Okay, then you got, you guys will make make a decision after, after you find out what goes down with the Supreme Court, then you guys will make a decision.
Exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, and and I think there's a lot of considerations to be made on that, um, and particularly, you know, how it affects our our workforce and how how it impacts the workforce, so we wanna. So we wanna see how that, uh, how that relates, but, um, and and, you know, what's a viable option, what are the viable options here, so.
Yeah.
Uh, the most viable options are to maintain service in the community.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
All right, so moving on to your your section of the town manager's update now, with trash, ARPA, snow parking van.
So just a cou- a couple of things, um, the, uh, as far as, uh, just the one other item, just before I before I talk about those three topics. Uh, earlier today, I did speak, uh, I did testify before that the the public safety, uh, legislature, the Joint Committee on Public Safety. And the and the legislature to, uh, on on the, uh, in in favor of the civil service bill that was passed by town meeting back in November. Um, I'm actually appreciative of the fact that we actually, uh, heard the bill, heard this early. Um, we did it via, um, via Zoom hearings, so it was actually pretty efficient how they did it, got it done, they. Did the whole hearing process within about a half an hour, which was actually pretty good. So we, uh, I appreciate the the work by, uh. By Representative Barrows and and Senator Feeney to to support our efforts in that that case. And uh, we're hoping that they report out favorably and then get the third reading fairly quickly. Uh, which means that it can be in front of the governor within the next thirty, forty days, maybe, and we'll see, we'll have that, have that bill, have that bill ready to go. Um, the the, with respect to the trash meeting, we did meet earlier, um, before this meeting tonight, starting around five thirty. We had, uh, we we did do a significant survey, uh, which, uh, I'm grateful to Christina for having pulled together the results and actually. They put that survey out. Uh, we put out several questions to the community, asking them about the current ser- trash service. Uh, we we received back about four hundred responses, which was, I thought was pretty significant. Uh, even though it's, you know, in in terms of a percentage basis of the population, it's it's still relatively small, but still a pretty good response. Uh, we did get an indication that about eighty percent of the of the population is is either satisfied or very satisfied with the. With the service that we currently provide, or is currently provided in the community. Um, there were a number of comments about how the service could be improved, and including anywhere from. Communication, uh, that they they currently do with the public, as well as how they handle barrels. Uh, you know, in in terms of making sure that the process is is a clean process, making sure that 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 everything, and and. The services they provide are the best service they can provide. For instance, there are other things such as bulk pickup, which is a little bit unclear as to how that's working right now. And so we need to actually get uh, better instruction from them, as well as, I think even to their own employees, as to how that's supposed to be handled. So they are new, so we'll give them the benefit of the doubt in that respect, but, uh, so there are a few changes I'm sure they're dealing with at their own organizational level. That, but generally speaking, I was pleased to see that the vast majority of people do like the service that we've, that responded to the, to the survey. So that means that we will, uh, reach out to the company, uh, you know, address the 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 items that we. Uh, saw, that came back through the responses, uh, see if we can get some uh, reaction to them, and see if they can actually. Uh, work towards addressing some of those con- those concerns that were identified in the meeting earlier tonight. Um, I certainly can defer to Steph, if she had anything further that she wanted to add, but uh, that was the summary of the meeting tonight.
Yeah, no, I mean, to have four hundred people respond. Which was pretty good. Um, and no, I, the only, um, the only thing, I mean, obviously, the town isn't providing the service. But, um, you know, I think if if Bill or whoever Bill, um, you know, gets maybe to reach out. Just to maybe, you know, a- as a representative for the town and for the people, um, yeah, there there weren't many, um, you know. It like Bill said, it was all about, uh, barrels being broken, thrown in the middle of driveways, in the middle of the street. Those were most of the complaints, and um, there was a lot of talk about, uh, the bulk pickup that. Um, and I I explained to to Bill, I said, I know when, when originally duly took over. Like there were, like, you could put out six bags of leaves, you could, um, you didn't have to pay for bulk pickup other than, um, mattresses. And I think, so that was some of the, some people are kind of like, they're calling, they're not picking up bulk, they're doing this, so if something's changed. With, um, what the service was gonna be, they've never, they haven't communicated it out to everybody else, but for the most part, it was, um. You know, like Bill said, most people were pretty happy with.
And ironically, I I thought it was, you know, interesting, it Mansfield, it's part of your taxes, and waste management has actually not been able to complete. Multiple routes during during, you know, that I've seen over the last month due to staffing issues. Um, you know, I'd heard one of the competitors in town, one of the smaller ones, wasn't taking new customers. So, um, you know, I think everyone's, everyone's having challenges, so how can we work together to. You know, to to advocate for the best service possible.
Exactly.
So moving on to, uh, the opera money, there's nothing new to report at this point in time, but, uh, we're just hoping to wait, just waiting to see if the. If the regulations come out this month. Um, if that happens, we'll be in a much better position to address. A a number of financial considerations that, uh, we'll have to talk with, further with the board and. And well, other other town agencies and commissions to determine what which direction we should go. But until we have clear direction on how we can spend the money, it's difficult for us to make any kind of recommendations for, for that kind of, those kind of expenditures. Um, the last but not least, um, was the, uh, the topic of, um. Remind me what the last one was.
Park in a snow parking van, we're gonna be getting.
So, so it is, uh, this time of year, that of course, during December, we actually implement the snow policy. That runs into April, uh, April fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken, or April, April first, April fifteenth. In which we, we don't necessarily require cars to be off the road at all times during those months. It's only during the time when we actually have a storm pending, and then we will notify the public. Uh, that the the snow emergency is in action, and that that's in place from, uh, one, from from one point in time. Say, six o'clock until, say, six, six o'clock the next morning, or or even noon time the next day. Uh, to to allow the the, uh, the DPW workers to do their job and to get the roads cleared for for all the, all the residents in the community.
And how will that be communicated, Bill? That will be Facebook, or can people subscribe to one of the departments for that, or?
We we put it out, we put it out through our Twitter, through our Facebook, through our, on our website, uh, we put it out through multiple channels. Um, to make sure that, uh, that that the word gets out. And and by and by and large, we've had a really good response, most people are used to the, the, uh, to that policy. Uh, we're actually one of the few communities in the area, uh, which, which actually, uh, we were actually, actually praised for doing it this way, because. You know, as as we all know, um, a lot of place, a lot of folks have multiple cars. And therefore, they're they're forced to leave cars in the street from time to time because they don't have enough place to park. So, um, in some communities, that becomes a real challenge, es- especially if you have to keep the cars off the road year round, uh, for several, several months. So it's, um, this obviously comes into play, and it's worked well in Foxborough, so there's been no real need to revisit that, but. The the policy has worked well, and and the police department, um, is is good about notifying people, letting people, reminding people, in fact. Uh, they they are not, they are parked during a a a significant snow flow fall, and we'll actually have them move the car. Before the trucks come through.
And and I don't think that residential is a problem in town, Bill, it's more uptown than I think of, it's our businesses. And making sure that that their customers can still access the businesses, you know, more than residents with not having enough room in their driveway, it's more. You know, someone being able to pull up in front of Cindy's, or, you know, wherever it may be, and and be able to, or park at the Orpheum, or, you know, whatever, so.
There is a car on my street that sits.
Always.
Always.
Very much fewer than other communities, I will say.
Yeah.
I believe you came before.
And making sure that we don't, you know, put it on the sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
That's right, that's right. Sorry, so so that's, that's really the policy, and, um, if, certainly if anybody has any questions about it, we can, we can certainly help them with that, that information. That's the latest.
Yes, Seth has something.
Sorry, I'm just gonna go back for a quick clarification point, Bill, as far as the waste management or trash and recycling. Um, everything that we talked about in that update was around service, and. Originally, I was under the impression that we were just looking for like a, get seven percent better rate or something, and move on, but. It it's more about quality of service than it is about price.
Well, interesting, interesting enough, um, Seth, it was, uh, it was, that 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 question came up. But generally speaking, um, the price that we have is a very competitive price, we talked about that during the meeting tonight. Uh, if you look at our, some of the other communities and what they're actually paying, uh, we're actually very competitive. So it's the, and and interesting enough, the the survey, out of the the entire survey. Only five people said we should actually switch companies. So, um, so it was, clearly, that there's there's a level of satisfaction with the. So, so it was clearly that there's a level of satisfaction with the, with the service that we currently have. The price is pretty much run, you know, by basis of market conditions. It's not that, you know, there's, there's a huge attempt to try and, you know, take advantage of customers in this community. It's really a, it's actually pretty competitive in comparison to some of the prices that we see in other communities at this point.
Right, I'm just comparing it to the electric program that we instituted a while back where we got sort of a group rate. That's what I had in mind when going into this process, but that was, I guess, different and.
Well, you know what Seth, I think too, I agree with you because some of the reasons why Larry originally brought up us like looking into it was he was wondering if like, if the town were to step in, would they be able to negotiate a better, a better price?
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, I think what happened too was some of it is, and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, because I think at the beginning of this discussions, actually A.J. Dooley had signed up to be part of the discussion. And I think the concern is you can't, unless we were to completely turn this into it's part of our taxes, okay? And because if you, you, people have the option to go, because we all don't have the same provider, that what could happen is, what happened before A.J. came in is, you know, that was Russell, right, I think, Bill? That was, might have been before you too, but anyhow. So, you know, you negotiate with Russell and, you know, and then next thing you know, A.J. started to offer service and people jumped ship to him. So there, it's, we're finding out it's hard unless it was completely in our taxes, you know, that way. Because, and I think people could still opt out, right, Bill? You know, right now, you can pick who you want. So I think that's the problem with trying to negotiate the price. Am I explaining that?
And well, technically, we don't have a contract with, with, with the service. So it's hard, we, it's hard for us to negotiate if we don't have the actual leverage on the contract itself. So even though they, they are the, sort of like the, you know, the collector of choice, so to speak, that doesn't mean that we have any more leverage per se in terms of negotiating contract with them. At the end of the day, we're not, they, it's still, they could, they could come to an agreement with us and then turn around and charge a different price three months later because they said the market, they could say the market conditions could go up again. So it's just, you know, at the end of the day, there's not a lot of leverage unless, the only way we would do that is if in fact we were to have a, we would say, okay, we're gonna put it out to bid and then maybe have a pay-as-you-throw program where, you know, where the money gets collected by the town or it gets collected by the town and then we actually would have to pay for that based upon a negotiated price. And also that they'd be the only collector in town. And so there were, there were pros and cons to that. Especially where, where right now, we didn't get the indication from anyone, at least not a strong indication at all that, that people were unhappy with the service that we currently have. So it's, there's always the concern that you would take something on that really isn't a problem or creating a problem, there isn't one at this point in time. So I guess that was the, the long, the long and short of it was that the price that we currently have is a competitive price and there's not much we can do beyond that, given the fact we don't really have a contract with the company.
So this initiative is over, Bill? Pretty much? Like quality's, quality's good, price is competitive, move on?
Well, I wouldn't say it's completely, it's over. I think, I think what was good about this process, Seth, was that, was that we're able to identify some of the concerns that people have. And I think that's something we want to bring to the attention of the company. And ultimately, that's something that we would, we would want them to address. Now, their failure to address that could mean that we could revisit the issue and take a different approach.
No, I didn't want to imply that there was, I think, I see value to the process, absolutely. And I just, the value's been sort of achieved, if you will. But okay, I'm ready to move on. I didn't want to derail too much. So thank you for the extra.
Well, fair enough. I just, I just want to make sure, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it wasn't, you know, a significant change, but it was one in which we identified some issues that really need to be addressed for us.
Sure, yep.
And Bill, before we move on off of your update, the only other thing I just had a note was budget books. So our next meeting, we'll be getting into the budget. And are we getting books by the end of the week? Is that what it looks like? I don't want to.
Yeah, Marie informed me that you'll have them by the tenth. That's her goal, which will be, I think, Monday of next week, if I'm not mistaken.
And obviously, everything's on ClearGov, but if you like a hard copy of the budget book, you know, we'll all get a notification so that we can digest that before, before our next meeting.
Right.
So I'm just looking at dates. So we meet next, sorry, I'm just thinking, we meet next on the eighteenth. If we got the budget books on the tenth, that would give us a full week, which I'm happy, I'm happy with that to look through in advance of our discussion, okay? Okay, all right, so we'll wait to hear from you on the, on the green light when those are ready for us to come, to come grab. Thank you.
That's right.
All right, for selectmen's update, I just had a couple of things that came in or I thought of after the agenda was posted. So when I was talking to Claudine to get the dates for the nomination papers for the election, we had also just mentioned or discussed, dog licenses are open right now, so, you know, register or renew your dog from now until the end of February. That is up on the town clerk's page, how you can do it, the fees and all that. And then talking about trash, a little more DPW, so to confuse things even more, DPW picks up Christmas trees. That is through the town and that's January third through the fourteenth. So that's also going on right now and I know that went out, I saw that going on social. And then we haven't.
Is it put out on your trash day? Is that what they're, how they're gonna try to maneuver?
But it is picked up by DPW. And you gotta get it out there, you know, it's, you gotta get it out there that day and during that timeframe, that's, that's when they're coming by. And then the other item that's here is the Uptown Common Stakeholders Meeting, which we had hoped to hold in person on the twelfth. But, you know, bringing that many people in a room, I don't know that that's the smartest thing right now, so that may be remote. But the intent of that meeting is, you know, you've got everyone uptown that's holding events like the J.C.'s, you know, the farmer's market by rec, you know, whoever, Foxborough Common Business Collaborative. Just bringing everyone together to see how we can work together on events uptown, how people can partner, being aware of what's going on. So we didn't even have a real list of who's on point for each organization or, you know, calendars, just to make sure events don't, don't overlap or where groups can combine forces where possible. So that meeting is on the twelfth and it's looking like it will be remote and I believe that will be on cable access as well. Any other items?
I have one, not, not to have any big discussion tonight, but just to throw it out there, maybe we can talk about it at a later meeting. And I'm not even sure when Christina and I'm guessing probably information from, from Bob's office starts to work on it. Over the last year, occasionally I've had people talk about the annual book. And so why I thought to say something tonight is because I was going through some stuff at home and I had, I just happened to have the nineteen books sitting there. A lot of people are saying that they would love to see the salaries put back in. I think maybe two years we didn't put them in.
One.
Was it just one year? And so anyhow, I don't know, you know, it was always been there. My thought process, you know, people have asked and I said, well, I'll mention it at some point. You know, it's not earth shattering, but it's, you know, we're up to almost a ninety, ninety million dollar budget. And I think sometimes people, and I know even though we say they can go on the town website, it's very hard to maneuver, to go through. And I don't know, I just have a thought process of maybe we could put them, put them back in and maybe we can have a discussion at a later time. I didn't want to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Bill and Christina have heard me kind of loud and clear say the same thing. So I don't, I don't know if, I think the plan is to put them back in. Let us know, Bill, if that's not the plan. You know, I know I have them on my desk and I have them lined up and for me, it's a lot easier to pull a book down than to go online.
Okay, if you guys have been discussing it, great. I didn't want to make it into any big discussion tonight, just wanted to throw it out there. But if you guys have already kind of talked about it, that'd be great.
Christina's all, Christina's all over the book. We're planning to have it ready two weeks before the election is the intent. Because that's, that's, you know, according to our bylaw. So we've had, we've had a lot of discussions over the course of the year about it. So let me know if you have any other, any other thoughts or anything else, but I think, I think we have a plan and we're on the same page on that one, Seth.
Right.
All right, any, anything else now? All right, so we have a pretty short action item list.
Ready to motion?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve a change of manager for GMRI, doing business as Olive Garden, from Joseph G. Kern to Lindsay L. Corin as vice president and secretary, and William R. White to Angel Simmons as president and treasurer.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, and then this is, this is one, just let me provide some context. Seth remembers, but we had a chair training that was, I don't know, what was that, October, October, November, sometime in the fall. And the school committee has a really nice public participation policy that's all in writing, it's with their agendas. And a lot of the other boards had said we'd like to have something like, like school committee has, that not only for the Board of Selectmen, but whether it be for conservation or, you know, planning board or whoever. So this is a generic policy that's coming out of those discussions from, from the fall. And it does leverage that school committee that I think, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. A great starting point that was then tweaked to be applicable for the other side of the House versus, versus schools, so. I think everyone has that policy, so ready for the motion? Oh, I don't see one.
So I could just say, motion to approve the new public participation policy for all boards, committees and commissions.
Any further discussion?
Second.
All right, so I think we'll just get that up on the website somewhere. Christina, if you could distribute it to all the chairs and then we'll put that on the back of our agenda.
Did I jump the gun there?
Nope, nope. All those in favor?
I'm chair.
Yes.
Just want to make a note, I did make a mistake in the motion for the, it was a change of officer, not a change of manager.
Okay.
Just wanted to make that clear.
All right, going back to item seven point one, so that is a change of officer, not a change of manager.
Oh, I thought you said management, which would have worked too.
Okay, thank you, Christina. All right, so I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.